Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome you to the Paulsboro City Council meeting for August thirteenth. Paulsboro is committed to being a welcoming, diverse, and equitable community where all people can access tools and opportunities to improve their quality of life, allowing them to reach their full potential. During its meetings, the Paulsboro City Council will use this lens to inclusively view its discussions and actions. Mr. Newell, would you do the land acknowledgement this evening?
Absolutely. Paulsboro is located on the ancestral lands of the indigenous Soquamish people, for whom this place was known as Tuk Tuk Lots or land of the vine maples. In eighteen fifty-four, Chief Seattle said, "Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hollowed by some sad or happy event and days long vanished."
Thank you, Mr. Newell. And now would you stand as you're able for the pleasure allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda is the agenda review, and I'm looking over at staff, and as far as I can tell, it stands as written, and if that is the case, I would entertain a motion for approval, please.
Mayor move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second, we have a motion in the second. Mr. Newell?
Newell, aye.
Pro, aye.
Taber, aye.
Eckerd, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Liddell, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, council. And now we're moving on to public comment. If you had comments for the council, please step to the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record.
Linda Paussen, Paulsboro Historical Society. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Administrator Gelder, members of the public. On behalf of the staff members and volunteers of the Paulsboro Historical Society, I would like to extend our thanks for the partnership with the council, mayor, and city hall the past fourteen years. As you moved forward this evening to terminate the contract for our agreement, we remain grateful for all who have participated in the original conversations that allowed us to find a solution that worked for all of us. We have enjoyed being a partner and in bringing the historical context of our community, hopefully encouraging our citizens to understand both the people and the ideals that built this city. We have opened the Archive and Resource Center to members of the community to see our archives, including many items from individuals who founded this community, to others who join us monthly to discuss the tools, efforts, and satisfaction of searching for and finding their Nordic ancestors, and to those who have helped us cataloging, storing, and displaying our archives. As we move into the future phase of our relationship with the city, we hope to continue our close partnership and look forward to continuing to find solutions that are win-win for both PHS and the city. Thank you for sharing your community home with us. Each of you are always welcome in ours. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Comments from citizens? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're moving on to mayor's reports and council comments. How are you this evening, Mr. Newell? Or excuse me, this afternoon?
Sun is shining. That's certainly summer here, but uh, it sounds like we might have some rain to cool us off. It'll be welcomed. I have nothing else.
Mr. Taber?
Nothing for me, mayor.
Mr. Eric?
Nothing tonight, man.
Good evening to my colleagues and our resident or citizens who are here and those who may be joining us online. Couple things, I just wanted to note that I read the inaugural issue of our new senior quarterly newsletter recently and want to compliment our Park and Rec staff, the Senior Task Force, and everyone who's been involved in taking a look at our senior programs and how we can be offering more to our community. And I think the the content in the newsletter certainly highlights a number of the new things we're doing and some additional opportunities for seniors in Paulsboro. And we've, you know, we've had people come to us in recent years requesting more senior programs and activities. Trying and also to see if we could develop some sort of partnership perhaps with the senior center that's downtown, that's a little bit different than our Park and Rec department. But I just really want to commend everybody for the progress we're making. I'm actually, I think, going to plan to come to one of your lifelong fitness sessions coming up soon to increase my flexibility and balance. So anyway, thank you to all of you involved in that, and I think it's a real step forward for our community. And then the last thing, I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that this weekend is the Paulsboro Arts Festival, an annual event in Waterfront Park that brings just some amazing artists to our town. Starts at noon Friday and continues Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There's some great music in the gazebo as well as the art, so I hope everybody will have a chance to stop down at the Paulsboro Arts Festival this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McVeigh. Ms. Liddell?
Nothing for me at this time.
Mr. Stern?
Thank you, mayor. As Councilman Newell read the land acknowledgement and quoted Chief Seattle eighteen fifty-four, Chief South, whose name became Seattle anglicized, his graveside services once again are Saturday morning at the original Catholic Mission Cemetery in Soquamish at ten AM. I know you were able to make it last year too, Councilwoman Liddell. So we're all invited individually and as a community to celebrate the life of Chief South, known as Seattle, the namesake of the city. And then lastly, and I was a little tardy getting this to you, Rhiannon, but the mayor and I were able to attend the chamber luncheon today. And who speaker was Dan Schoonmaker, our emergency programs director. He gave an excellent presentation. And I was able to sit with North Kitsap School District Superintendent Rachel Davenport. And we look forward to developing a lot of outside relationships in coordination with that report, right, mayor?
Dr. Davenport.
Dr. Davenport, yes, absolutely.
That's it. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. My only report is to answer to the Historical Society. I'm so glad you're here this evening. Every time I think about the museum here, I have to think about Councilmember Dale Rudolph, who without his leadership and stubborn determination, I say that with affection, stubborn determination, that museum up there would not exist. When this city hall was built, the building was very large. It was rough economic times for the city of Paulsboro. So we were downsizing city government as we built a very large building. And it seemed logical at the time to give a home or grant a home to the Historical Society, which had a little office up in the, what was it, the, up on the hill, just this little office. Yeah, yeah, just a little office where nobody could really even see anything that it had. And a bunch of really dedicated people who worked really, really hard to create what we have now, which is a really vibrant Historical Society. You guys are doing terrific work. I think about how you've grown and all of the services that you've provided to the community. And it's, it's absolutely amazing to see what's happened in the last fifteen years. And so we got a city hall and the Historical Society got a home. And the Historical Society has outgrown its home, and congratulations for outgrowing your home. And once again, a thank you to the late Dale Rudolph, who, without his inspiration and really determination, it wouldn't have happened. So thank you for coming this evening. Appreciate it.
Mayor, may I tag on to that? If you're going to remember, Councilman Rudolph, precessing him was longtime Mayor Mitch Mitchison, whose desire as he retired in nineteen ninety-nine after fifteen years at the helm, wants to see the Historical Society enter into a safe place and be able to stand up its operation, which is the mayor's remark about what was on Jensen originally before moving into the city hall.
I thought they were up at Hostmark. They had an office up there too, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere up on the hill, Powder Hill? Up on Powder Hill? I can't remember, but there was... Ah, okay, down there, down in, yeah. Anyway, you were a lot of places, but nowhere particularly prominent. So now you, now you're prominent and you're growing, so it's good news. So thank you. Okay, moving on, unless there's any other comments, okay? Board commissions and outside agency reports, any? It's August. Now that they cancel all the meetings in August, there's nothing particularly going on, so. City Administrator and Department Head's comments. Hey, Rob, how are you? You're in Wenatchee?
No, no, I'm in Walla Walla. So while Councilmember Newell mentioned the sun, it is ninety-six degrees here. A little bit more than I'm used to, so. Boy, man, I look forward to getting back to the west side. But yeah, so I'm here attending the Washington City County Managers Association Annual Conference, which started yesterday in part, but today with a vengeance in terms of really starting off with an introductory session for often new administrators, new managers, those coming from outside of Washington in particular, because we kind of hit the highlights about Growth Management Act, about Open Public Meetings Act, et cetera, just so that everybody had a good grounding and moving forward. And then over lunch, we actually heard from Dean Sanford from the Evans School, which was a very interesting conversation about really kind of the reconstruction of democracy. And kind of in many ways, we're taking things down to the studs and rebuilding, which was a great analogy for that. And then this afternoon, we learned all about AI. And as all of our jurisdictions are starting to grapple with that and making sure that we have everything in place, whether it comes to policy, et cetera. And then also going on there and learning about sort of trauma in the workplace, which, you know, we don't think about it often. We think about first responders being our police and our fire. But in so many ways, when it comes to, and this is our emergency management as well, and our public works teams, they're the ones that are often first on the scene and maybe last to leave. And we don't think about always sort of the impact that those experiences have on them in a lasting way, and then how we as a city jurisdiction can go on to support them and make them successful. So just wanted to call that out as well, and we've got a couple more days of the conference, and thank goodness, I hear the weather's going to be getting a little bit cooler here, so I'm looking forward to that. And then just last this evening, just want to thank you all and call out both Councilmember Eckerd and McVeigh as they are have received their certificates of municipal leadership, which is a great accomplishment for their investment of time, energy, really being able to understand their roles as council members and leaders in the community. So a shout out to both of them.
Congratulations, Rick. Congratulations, Gary. Appreciate it. You know, stay safe over there, Rob. Don't get cooked, all right? Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gelder? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to Department Head. Department Head comments?
I just have a couple of quick things. Good evening, council and mayor. This is Diane from Public Works. We will be applying for a TIB grant this week. Josh is putting that together, and it's for one point seven five million dollars for Third Avenue. I know Third Street has been important to get done, and so keep your fingers crossed. I think we have a good shot at that. Just a reminder that the boardwalk repair will start next week. Correct. So there will be some intermittent closures of the boardwalk while they're working on the rail for safety reasons, and they'll do that as the work progresses, and they should finish by the end of the week, for sure. On other news, there are a couple of notable projects happening downtown. One is the night work on the Van Heimer, anticipated over the next three weeks, and the signs are up, so expect some closures. They'll be working on primarily utility work during that timeframe. The second project that's been very interesting to a lot of people is the re-roofing of the Mentor Building. That's the building that has the Liberty Bay Bookshop. It also has hot shots. There's scaffolding around the building. Unfortunately, that's what it takes to get up on top of the roof to perform the roof repair. And that will be done over the next three to six weeks. So the contractor that's doing it is actually pretty efficient, so I think they may exceed their deadline. There has been some interest in what some of us call the onion or the spiral. That is something that's coming down as part of that process. And I just want to let everybody know that as part of the process they went through to get approval, there were other modifications that they wanted to do to the building that the planning department did not allow, so we were able to keep in the dormers and some of the other items. But just a heads up, the scaffolding will be there for three to six weeks. And it is a disruption. They did wait until after the Viking Fest was complete and after the Fourth of July, and it needs to be done during the summer months, so.
And they notified all their tenants in advance, correct?
They did. They were responsible for notifying the tenants, yes. And quite honestly, I have meant to mention this at the last couple of council meetings and forgot. I've mentioned it in every other meeting, but not at council, so for that, I apologize for not letting the public know, because it's a big building downtown. Thank you.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
You mentioned that decorative element, the onion, is, so that's not going back up, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, and Heather might have more information on that than myself, but, but it is not going back up. That's my understanding.
Do you know if there's something else going in its place?
I can just share the planning review portion of the building permit. The site had been subject to design review in years past, and the design review was limited to the dormers, which originally they proposed to remove and not replace. But because it had been part of a former design review, we were able to require those to maintain or to ask for an amendment to their site plan review to remove them. However, the, the blue onion, we've called it internally, is, was not a part of that design review, and we have no indication that they're going to replace it with anything.
We didn't have the legal ability to make them replace it. So.
We, we should also make clear that all of the businesses remain open during the re-roofing project, is my understanding. So they're open for business.
Okay. Rick, anymore? Anyone else? I, I just want to, I just want to say thank you to the mentors for actually improving the building. For a, a long time, a lot of our buildings were falling into pretty bad disrepair downtown. And whenever a landlord like that takes it upon themselves to dump a lot of money into an existing building, it's a, that means they're investing in our downtown, which is, which is a good thing. Yes, the scaffolding is inconvenient. Yes, it doesn't look as nice. And, but hopefully they will, it's to everybody's advantage. They will get it done as soon as possible. Nobody, nobody wins when it drags on, so. I thank, I ask for everyone's patience as this moves forward. Okay, any other questions from Diane? Diane? Okay, who's up next? Go ahead, Deb.
We are getting to the end of our audit. I mentioned last time that we will be coming forward with the accountability audit. That exit conference has been established on September second at three o'clock. So we will be sending out some invites, and that is a portion of the audit that they evaluate some of our internal controls and some of those day-to-day items that we do. And so I think they have a couple mentions of items that they'll send out to us, but I think it's fairly clean.
Good news. Who's up next? Chief, go ahead.
Asked Officer Dom Mahilo to present a story tonight, just a very short interaction that he had that was impactful that we all felt was very important, and asked him to go ahead and come and share just what that was.
Can you inter? Can you sit down and, and talk into the mic and introduce yourself, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Officer Mahilio. Been working in this beautiful city for about four years now. And my bosses asked me to come out here and share a story with you guys, but I want to preface this with this. The story you're about to hear is super awesome, but I want to remind you guys that we have some amazing officers that work at this agency. This is like a quarter of a percent of what happens in the city. Because the people that we work with, that I'm privileged to work with, are all amazing human beings. So this is just, again, very small part, and I just talk more than most, so they heard it. So this is one of those things, I think. So I think a couple of months ago, I responded to a theft in progress at the Safeway. Subject had a good description of him. He ended up seeing me, and he tried to run from me. As you guys can tell, most people cannot run from me, so I ended up, I ended up getting him into custody and arresting him. Found out, breaks my heart a little bit to this day, he, he stole food. He was hungry. I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's tough. I, I see the people out there every day, and it's very tough to see what people are struggling with, and obviously, as an agency, our job is to do the best we can to help them and make sure we keep them safe and provide them with what they need to survive. So I got upset with him, and I told him, like, I would have just bought you food. Like, you can call nine-one-one, ask to speak to an officer, tell me you're hungry, and I'll buy you dinner. So subsequently, we had to take him to jail. I see him, I think it was last month at this time, I saw him at the, a corner with a sign. So I parked, and I told him, like, you're not in trouble. Want to say hi? Because he started walking away from me. I'm like, no, you're not in trouble. Believe me, you're good. It's okay. I asked him if he remembered me. He said, yes, I do, sir. I'm like, cool, I remember you. Remember what we talked about last time? And he said, yes. I'm like, so, you hungry? And he goes, why, yes, I am. I'm like, all right, what do you want? He's like, surprise me. I'm like, no, this is your, your time, and this is your day. You pick what you want, and I will make it happen. So I went to the Central Market. I bought, he wanted some pizza, and I'm like, man of culture. So went to the Central Market, bought him about three or four slices of pizza, and got him some water, and then we ended up sitting there next to Taco Time on one of the benches and had a conversation about life. And I'll be honest with you, out of all the things that I've done here, that was probably one of the, the things that really sets in why I love this job and why I love this community so much. As, because, you know, sometimes people have to pay for their consequences, but it's a reminder to us that we are all still human. We make mistakes, and I like to believe that I made a difference in his life that day. And it affected me enough to where I was telling my, like, my coworkers about it. And like, again, I remind you, this is just half of a percent of what the awesome cops here are doing in the city of Paulsboro. And I'm privileged to be able to sit here, represent my agency, and represent the other officers that are sitting there and driving around and tell you guys this story. So I just wanted to tell you guys that story, but appreciate you guys. Oh, I'll leave that to you.
That's, that's a wonderful story. Thank you for sharing it.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, thank you.
You guys have a wonderful rest of day. You guys take care.
I just add that we're the privileged ones to have.
People like that, officers like this. No, I, I look at the police logs every morning, and I think that they're out there and, and they're working really hard and sometimes trying, trying situations, and they're doing such superlative work. Chief, my hat goes off. Deputy Chief, thank you so much. Ron, anything else? Nothing? Okay. Who's up next? Anyone? Mike?
The power I have there, right? Just a heads up for everybody. If you haven't had a chance to go up on the Calder and Paulsboro Gardens and Forest Rock, we're doing the fog seal, the second part of the chip seal scrub seal project. We did fog sealing in, in half of the neighborhoods today. Hopefully, weather holds out long enough, we can finish tomorrow, but it actually is turning out pretty good. You guys should drive by, take a look at it. Hopefully, we'll do some more of that in the upcoming years, so.
Super. Thanks, Mike. Neighborhood streets. Well done. Uh, anyone else? Did I miss anybody? Jeff, come on up. Musical chairs.
The bigger table, okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, community members. Jeff Osmack, Parks and Rec Director, just a few updates. So the STO, the Sound Olympics Ride that we're organizing for elected officials is shaping up really nicely. Big shout out to Diane Leñez and Diane Iverson for assisting, and everyone, we'll have a reminder going out, that's on September fifth, but we're looking at, it's looking really good. It's looking really, really put together right now. You're going to hear more about our wonderful senior programs. A very big thank you to Councilmember McVeigh for seeing that, the newsletter and everyone else who weighed in on that. You'll have a great presentation from our, our Senior Task Force instructors and volunteers later this evening. We also had a great conversation a couple of weeks ago with bringing back, putting together a community sailing program in collaboration with Paulsboro Yacht Club, as well as with Silverdale Sailing, and took a look at our inventory of boats that we have at Robb Park and how we can work together to bring back sailing and not compete. It has its challenges for sure, but it was a very productive meeting of about seven or eight of us. We'll be following up here in the next few weeks. The other things is we do have a wonderful Eagle Scout project that Parks Coordinator Rachel Cornet has worked with young folks over into our park, so you'll hear an update about all the good work. It's really heartening to see community members come to us and ask how they can serve. And on that topic, and talking about food insecurity, we had a wonderful meeting today with Western, WSU with our Learning Garden that raises, that raises plants and donates thousands of pounds of food. You might remember their presentation. You might remember their presentation and about how we can potentially expand that partnership. And that leads into, one of the final updates are unfortunately our summer concert series has ended. It ended last night. We had record turnout of 450 to 650 individuals each time. And we partner with Fishline each and every single one of those concerts. And we were privileged to have their staff and executive director down there. And so folks can contribute non-perishables and it goes straight back to one of our core partners and to folks in need. And then let's see. Lastly, there, we will know next week. If you haven't seen Robb Park recently, there's a, there's a pretty good looking skate park that's getting built up there by our community members. I mean, it's really amazing. And we, we will know next week, cause that's our go no-go date to determine when the grand opening ribbon cutting is going to be. But fingers crossed, we're hoping for September, later in September. But we're, it's, it's based on just finishing the project out, but you will know, just putting it roughly in your calendar, end of September, maybe October, what's happening. And then final reminder, LTAC Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. We have a Paulsville Tourism Grant that's currently open. It closes here in the beginning of September. So if you are interested in bringing more, more, putting more heads in beds, bringing tourism to Paulsville, promoting events or special types of marketing, please visit our city website. We have a lot of information. We're there to help. Thank you.
Yeah. Robb Park is amazing. The combination of the play for all and the, and the new skate park. It's, there's things happening up there. It's really, it's very cool. Thanks, Jeff. Any other department heads? Okay. I'm not seeing anything. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the city council for reading and study and are considered to be routine. It's items eight A through C. And I entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Newell.
Noel, aye.
Pro, aye.
Taber, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Lived, aye.
Thank you, Council. And now on to the business agenda. And the first is Resolution Number 2025-10 Investment Policy Approval. And this is Jenna and Deb. It's the Finance Department. Go forward. Let's do it.
So we have the pleasure of presenting the process for updating our investment policy. I want to introduce you first. Oh, sorry. Jumped the gun. Sorry. Just trying to get the slideshow. So I want to introduce Jenna. A lot of people don't see us in the back room. And so Jenna's been with the city for about four or five years. She first started in the role, coming in as a part-time accounts payable person, quickly moved to full-time and probably less than a year moved over to your utility billing accountant. And has been doing your utility billing for about three or four years and was promoted to senior accountant last year. And she worked us through the annual financial statement. So Jenna's been a great asset to their department and it has also many trainings, areas to fill us all in. And so we had our investment policy, which had expired. And so one of Jenna's second tasks after the financial report was to put together and get our investment policy recertified. And now it's coming before you. And so now I let Jenna go ahead. Sorry, Jenna.
Nope, that's fine. So we are going to go over the couple of items that pertain to updating the investment policy. And like Debbie said, and then a proposed resolution to adopt the new policy. So the presentation items we're going to discuss, we're going to go over the life of the prior policy and why we are updating it. We're going to touch on the WPTA Investment Certification Program. We're going to discuss what went into amending the prior policy. We will talk about Chandler Asset Management and how wonderful they are and their role and how we benefited from their invaluable help. And then the last one, I don't want to ruin the surprise, so we'll go on to, we'll save that for last. So the prior investment policy was adopted in 2018, so it is almost exactly seven years old at this point. And for an investment policy, that's getting up there in age, especially for the WPTA certification, which is valid for five years. Our last certification was in 2019. So we are definitely due for a renewal. And so that, that WPTA certification helps us stay in line with the, the audit, State Auditor's Office standards. Keeps our policy fresh and relevant. Make sure that we're using our best practices for investing. So when we were amending the prior policy, we really focused on three areas. We were working on just general updates, bringing the investment policy into 2025. The city, seven years for a city isn't very long, like in city years, but for the last seven years in Paulsville, there's been a lot of growth and change. So we needed to evolve that language in the policy to make it more relevant. And then also, like I said, bring up the, the changes that are prescribed by WPTA and Auditor's Office. We worked on the aesthetics of the investment policy, making it more reader-friendly. Just making it easier to read in general, adding more definitions, table of contents. And then the final area was the, the technical part. So working on the accuracy of the investment policy, making sure that it aligns with our current practices and then bringing in Chandler for that higher level assessment. So these are some examples of the modifications and revisions made. Getting rid of any language that involved the finance committee, adding the city administrator where appropriate. We added some new sections and got rid, or excuse me, and then added the permanent fund to the scope of, of applicability. As well as just moving some things around so that it flowed a little bit, made a little more sense in the flow. Like I said, we added the table of contents, the addendums, used more bullet points to highlight key concepts and ideas or key items that, that were referenceable. Got rid of some definitions in the glossary that, that weren't relevant anymore and then added the, the definitions of the RCWs. So once the policy was drafted, we sent it off to Chandler Asset Management and Cara Hooks, who is our portfolio strategist. And she did a fantastic job of proofreading it, making sure that she addressed our questions when there were items that I just didn't know. A year in this job with the investment policy or investment processes is not enough to know everything. And then she also helped us interpret certain sections that were recommended and then make it fit to the city's comfort level and conservative investment approach. So Cara did a great job of, of assisting us. So. This is the fun part. So we, we sent it off to WPTA, I think it was maybe June. And a panel of impartial statewide reviewers went over the investment policy that we presented to them. And right before I left for vacation, I got an email that said that we did a fantastic job. Essentially there were, there was some positive feedback, no negative feedback and no suggestions for them to consider, which he said was unusual. This was from Steve Groom, the Investment Policy Committee Chair at WPTA. We are now one of 12 out of 281 cities in Washington that currently have the certification. And finally, he did ask us to send this policy to, to MRSC, our Municipal Research Services Center, to add it as a sample policy because it didn't just meet the minimum criteria, it met all the criteria. And it's a very good example that they would like to use. So with that, we did get our certificate of excellence.
Well done, finance. Woo-hoo.
Yay. So we're good for another five years.
I love, I love the curtain effect. That was cool. I'm going to have, I want to, I want to learn that. I do have one question if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
I read the prohibited investments section. And I, I understand why we would want to prohibit investments in collateralized mortgage obligations, inverse floaters, negotiable certificates of deposit and some other instruments. But one here that's listed, I just wasn't, I was questioning, why would we prohibit investments in money market mutual funds? Can somebody just help me with that?
We, because most of our liquid money is sitting with the state local government investment pool. And so we're not setting up separate bank accounts with money market. The government pool has a 24 hour or less than 24 hours that we can retain those funds. And they will receive a much better interest rate than mutual funds.
Okay. So we have liquidity as well as higher interest rates.
And then also keeping in mind too, that money markets are in your bank account. And so only certain portions of them are federally insured. And so that's why keeping them at the pool is a much safer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good work. Thank you.
I really think it's the insurance piece that they want to keep the money safe and just about, I, I can't think of a mutual fund that doesn't have some kind of, how should we say, a little more inherent risk. So that's probably the reason. Any questions? Well done. Very well, very well done. If there are no other questions, it's Resolution 25-10 and I would entertain a motion.
I'll do that. See. Motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Paulsville, Washington, adopting an updated investment policy for city funds.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any questions regarding this? Seeing none. Mr. Newell.
Noel, aye.
Pro, aye.
Taber, aye.
Hecarva.
McVeigh, aye.
Lived, aye.
Sternek.
Thank you, Council. Well done, guys. The next is the Kitsap County ILA for the Wesog. Which is the West Sound Stormwater Outreach Group.
This is Rachel Bowen. Good evening, Council. I'm Rachel Bowen. I'm our stormwater permit coordinator. And tonight I'm here to talk about our stormwater public education and outreach agreement with Kitsap County. This is our time for our three-year renewal of the ILA. So a little bit about Wesog, that's as the mayor said, the West Sound Stormwater Outreach Group or Wesog. Since 2008, Wesog has worked collaboratively and pooled our resources to meet MPS permit requirements for public education outreach. Wesog includes us, the county, Bainbridge Island, Bremerton, Fort Orchard, Gig Harbor and the city of Port Angeles. So for permit requirements, there's three kind of main components for public, public education outreach. There's general awareness programs, behavior change programs and stewardship activities. And through Wesog, we focus primarily doing for general awareness and behavior change. So a few of our current and past Wesog programs. So first is our Mutt Mitt stations. I'm sure you guys have seen those around city. We, we have ones that are sponsored by the city that we take care of. But through Wesog, you can also sponsor a Mutt Mitt station. So an individual business or HOA can ask for a station and Wesog will supply one for them.
We, we had a question of NPDS.
Oh, yeah. So my apologies. That's the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. So the city of Paulsville, because we discharge to waters of the state and discharge to our streams in Liberty Bay, we have to have a permit with the department, the ecology. That's my apologies. I should include that.
Ecology has more weird acronyms.
Stormwater is the world of weird acronyms, including Wesog. We're not immune from it. All right. So for Mutt Mitt, we, we do sponsorships. We also have city maintained stations as well. We get usually between two or three sponsorship requests a year for a new station. And last year, the city used 57,000 Mutt Mitt bags for our city managed stations. So incredible number of bags. And that is a behavior change campaign. We also have our natural yard care campaign. We did that from 2020 until this year. With that, we had master gardeners give webinars about natural yard care and Wesog provided discounts for organic fertilizer so that residents could try doing natural yard care. We also contribute to the Puget Sound Starts Here Campaign. This is a digital campaign, Puget Sound wide. And Wesog makes a donation on our behalf for digital media. And that is September and October of each year. So a little bit about the benefits of using Wesog. So first off, the county provides dedicated physicians for education outreach. They have two people there who have backward, sorry, backgrounds in social marketing. And they do primarily, most of their work is through Wesog, both for the county and all the other cities that are involved. We get consistent messaging across the region as well. So every city in Kitsap County, as well as the county and Gig Harbor and Port Angeles have regional messaging. It's all going to be the same. Through Wesog, we also get really high quality behavior change campaigns as well as permit required campaign evaluations. So through Wesog, we pay a percentage of the overall population of all the cities involved. So the city as being a smaller one, we pay a smaller amount. But through the overall Wesog budget, we're able to hire consultants to help us develop campaigns. We're able to hire consultants to be able to identify grant opportunities. And they also do help us with the evaluations as well. So a little bit about this ILA. So this is going to be for 2026 to 2028. The total ILA budget is not to exceed $21,109. And the components of that, I'll just go through real quick. We have the Kitsap County, those social marketing experts, their staff time is in there. Base program estimates, and this is for development of a new behavior change campaign. After the evaluation of the natural yard care campaign, we decided to move in a new direction. So the base program is for developing a new behavior change campaign, but also the, yeah, sorry, developing and the evaluation of it. We have Puget Sound Starts Here contribution. So Wesog will make a $5,000 contribution of which our part is $204 annual. There is school lessons in there as well to build out our general awareness programs. And there's $500 annually for Mutt Mitt stations. So that works out to about two to three sponsorship requests each year, which is historically what we've, we've had. So. There's the budget and I have a sample motion up. I'm happy to answer any questions about the ILA or any of our programs.
That's 9,500 Mutt Mitts per mile. Okay.
Yes.
I mean, that's a lot of little bags. Yes, it is. Go ahead, Gary.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for your good work on this, Rachel. I'm wondering besides the cost, were there any substantive changes to the ILA that we should know about?
Um, so the kind of preamble part of the ILA, that's all the same from previous. So like the legal stuff. There's a little bit of programmatic changes. Again, we're phasing out the natural yard care campaign due to just the evaluation and feedback that we got from the Department of Ecology when we had a meeting with Wesog. We all met with them. So there'll be a change there. That campaign is set to start next year, so we haven't quite figured out how it's going to look. But it's going to generally be about preventing bacterial pollution from dumpsters that are open and leaking. So.
That's a good one, too.
Yes, we're very excited for that, especially with our TMDL for Pico Coliform for Liberty Bay. I think it'll be a very, very nice fit.
Pam and then Rick.
Right. So there is a website that's hosted by Kitsap County. So individuals, businesses or HOA, they can put in their address there and then the county will coordinate with wherever it's located. So if it's over in the city of Paulsville, they contact me. And they will get a Mutt Mitt station. They will get a sign, a very nice sign that has, you know, they can say who it's sponsored by as well to put up. And they get an initial supply of bags. And then usually I'll work with, to see if the, where's the best place to install it, where they kind of generally where they want it. And then after that, after that initial supply of bags, they, the sponsors are responsible for refilling it. So. But yes, that's on the county website. So, but yes, that's uh, on the county website, so the stormwater portion of their website.
Go ahead.
Yeah, one of my questions was going to be the continuing support of those stations, how that works out. You said it's, it's the sponsor that asked for it. So um, you get kind of calls then, like where people come across them and they're empty and thinking that we do that? Or is that, is that not a challenge?
Alright, much better. Alright, we, we do occasionally get calls like that. Um. And when we have new sponsors, they will leave contact information. So we can contact them and let them know like, hey, your mutt mitt station is, is depleted. Appreciate if you could refill that. And then for the city ones, we'll have um, our public works managers read the link of those. So they're usually very rarely get calls about that because they're always on top of it. It's why we go through so many bags.
Um, and then just the other question, I, I was surprised to see the two cities that aren't in the county that are part of this. Are there any kind of challenges to having them not be part of Kitsap County, but yet part of this program? I could see it's easy as an inter-county thing, but now you're reaching into two other counties. Just. In your experience, has there been any challenges since they've come in because of having to head into those other counties? Is that anything that you?
Right.
Adjust going into this new ILA or?
No, that's, that's a great question. Um, Gig Harbor and Port Angeles have been part of Westog, I think, since two thousand thirteen, I want to say. So um, there are sometimes challenges when we're trying to arrange in-person meetings. So that's why uh, we usually host those meetings. Because we're a nice in-the-middle ground for everybody. Um, but through evaluations of like our previous campaigns, we find that even though they're a little different. Geographically, a lot of the motivations of these priority audiences that we're looking at remain, remain the same. So there's small challenges, but overall it's worked really well and it's nice to have uh, the collaborative input from them as well.
I'd be happy to make a motion, mayor. Um, move to authorize the mayor to sign the inter-local agreement. Between Kitsap County and the city of Paulsboro for the West Sound Stormwater Outreach Group to continue participation in the regional program. That helps the city meet national pollution discharge elimination system. NPDES permit requirements.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions around this? More mutt mitts, at least three or four up on Johnson Parkway. My god, it's dog highway up there, okay? Any further questions? Seeing none. Mr. Newell.
Noel, I.
Pro, I.
Taber, I.
Hecarot, I.
McVeigh, I.
Lived, I.
Sternak.
Thank you, council. Well done.
Thank you.
And now we are up to our period for a break. You want ten minutes, folks? Okay, it's uh, we'll re, re, return at six, six o'clock. Okay, the first thing on our workshop agenda this evening is a presentation about the seniors programs, events, and facility updates. And this is Chris Goodfellow. Chris, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Chris Goodfellow. I'm the programmer for Paulsboro Parks and Recreation. And I am very excited to be here tonight to talk about our wonderful senior program, our National Health and Fitness Day that we had back in May. And some of the fun things that our senior task force has been doing. I brought with me some friends and there should be type that fills in. I'm not sure why. Oh, there it is. Uh, so I have Dolores Leverett with me. She is our health and wellness specialist that we recently brought on the first part of the year. And also Margaret Hudson. She's one of the members of the senior task force and a former Parks and Rec Commissioner. And I thought that we were going to have some members of Rotary with us this evening, but it doesn't seem like they made it. Or George and his lovely wife Judy from the Senior Center. Um, but we do have a Parks Commissioner here, Mary Sabota-Gro is with us this evening. As long, as well as Jolene Colerson, one of our instructors. So just really quick, a little brief history. In two thousand twenty-two, we started offering a weekly free senior class. Uh, it was an attempt to get seniors back engaged in the community after COVID. These classes ranged from anywhere, art classes, educational classes, um, fitness classes. We had members of the community volunteer to come and do uh, talks uh, like Liberty Shores did a class on dementia. Um, our own Rob Gelder came and talked right after he first became city administrator about plans for Paulsboro. Uh, these classes have been really well received. At the end of the first year, the seniors were participating and enjoying them. But what they really wanted was more fitness classes. They wanted more opportunities to get stronger and healthier and be engaged. And so we started um, some more fitness programs for them. And my friend Margaret is going to talk about those.
Thank you so much for all of you. Thank you for your volunteer time that you give to the city. It's really appreciated. I know you give a lot. It's not just a couple, one day a week. It is so much more. Um, I'm going to really kind of focus on one of our classes and this is our lifelong fitness class. This meets Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, so three days a week, which is amazing, from twelve fifteen to one fifteen. And anytime you are available, please feel free to drop in. It is a free class and it's wonderful. Um, we started off originally with it having meeting one day a week, probably ten to fifteen people. We now meet three days a week and we probably have forty-plus people every day. I know most of you know that um, twenty-five percent of this population in our community are seniors. That's, that's me. That's us. There we are, right? Right? And it's really important. These programs really promote longevity. Um, because you're going to see me around a long time. I'm telling you. You can't get rid of me. Um, the, the, the program that we do with the senior fitness class is amazing. So three days a week, seniors work out with weights. They do yoga. They work on balance. They work on flexibility. They work on fall prevention. They work on all those things that happen to us or anyone and how to, how to deal with it. And how to be stronger and how to stay vibrant in our community. Because by golly, we guys, we've got amazing community here, an amazing community. Um, it also is huge with social engagement. Um, we hear from, you'll see testimonials that will come up. People are so excited. It's, it's not just a fitness class. It's their social engagement. It's being out in the community. It's getting away from isolation. It's making new friends. People ride share. They go to lunch. People ride share. They go to lunch together. They do all kinds of activities outside of these classes because they've met people in their class that they've become friends with. I mean, I think that says it all. During COVID, so many seniors got isolated, and now we see so many seniors out and about. I mean, you're talking 40 people that are out and about three days a week. And this is all because of Parks and Recreation. They make it possible. We also make sure that we don't have any barriers to these programs. So if there's seniors that can't afford, these are free, but if there's seniors that can't afford other activities in Parks and Rec, we have our partnership with Fishline, which also helps for seniors to be able to have access to funding. It's, it's just amazing. The thing is, we don't just stop with those. We continue on in our community, in my community. We are those people that are in Kiwanis, Rotaries, Lions Club, on the Parks and Trail system. We are those people that keep volunteering. So we are vital to this community. Don't ever forget that. We think we're pretty special. So there you go. That's what I have to say to you, and thank you for your time.
Yes. So Dolores is going to talk a little bit about our National Health and Senior Day that we had back in May.
On May 28th, Paul'sville Park and Recreation presented or participated in the 32nd Annual National Senior Health and Fitness Day. This was our second year hosting. The free event's primary focus is older adults' health, wellness, and independence through education, fitness, and community connection. After all was said and done, we had over 100 seniors and volunteers that participated in a full day of activities for mind, body, and spirit. We were incredibly grateful to partner with Town and Country, Safeway, and Starbucks, who generously donated snacks and refreshments for our event. We also have participation from organizations including Fishline, the Paul'sbow Branch of Kitsap Regional Library, Paul'sbow Senior Center, and Liberty Shores, who came out to provide free blood pressure checks. Additionally, I'd like to point out that all of our activities were led by community members who donated their time, free of charge, to lead our activities that day. We hosted fitness classes, which included a historical walk, strength training, a lifelong fitness class, which is the core of our senior fitness program, Tai Chi, mind-body sessions, which included meditation and art, and educational talks, fall prevention, nutrition, a cooking class, and aging well, which seems vague, but it was a health talk that had every topic you can imagine. It was very engrossing, and I ended up sitting in on it myself. And if you can imagine, I highly encourage you to attend it because it was quite informative, and I learned a few things. It exceeded our attendance goals. We over-doubled our attendance from last year, and I'd like to believe we really fostered some connectedness and wellness with the members that were members of our community that attended. Looking ahead, we plan to build on this year's success, learn from what we did this year, do better next year, expand our offerings, and reach even more seniors in 2026.
I turned it off, sorry. So our senior task force we put together two years ago, it's a compilation of some staff members, our Parks and Rec Commissioners, members of Rotary, other individuals in the community who wanted to participate. From time to time, Karina from the library stops in, Kim Hendrickson has come and participated a little bit. And the main goal of this task force was to come up with ways to find sustainable funding for these programs that we were offering, and then also come up with other programming ideas for the seniors to participate in. And everyone agreed that the first thing that we wanted to try to tackle was improving the space that our program was happening in, which is our kitchen space. And you can see with this lovely before picture that we took. I had asked Josh to help me come up with an estimate for what it would take to put new countertops and appliances in that space so that we could use that estimate with real numbers for some grant opportunities. We, we pulled things together. It was rather serendipitous that Home Depot was just having a crazy sale on cabinets. The mayor got involved with discretionary funds. She helped us make that purchase. Appliances, they were offering this great deal. Home Depot donated materials. Public Works is amazing, and they helped to renovate. And so now we have this lovely half of a kitchen that really upgraded that space, which has been fabulous. So the next phase for our task force was to finish that space. And we were lucky enough to get Bluefoot Designs to donate the time to put in a design and what it would cost to purchase round tables that are better for conversation, more comfortable chairs, to kind of turn the space into more of a comfortable social space for seniors to hang out in, but also give us the flexibility that we need to do painting classes in there and art camp for kids or cooking classes in the evening. And so we have this great design, and we did just find out that we were awarded a $5,000, not scholarship, grant from Rotary to finish the job. So we're very excited about that, and that will happen this fall. One of the other things that our senior task force was involved in this year was putting together our inaugural issue of the Senior Connections Newsletter that you guys talked about earlier. Thank you very much. The newsletter right now will be a quarterly endeavor that will go out, and the idea is to pull together all of the great programming that the community is offering already so that it is in one place for seniors to see and find. And our next issue should come out the end of September, the first part of October, for the fall session. And then just really quick to leave you guys with, we, we started these programs in 2022. We had a little over 200 seniors participate in that weekly free class. We doubled that number in 2023 and almost doubled it again in 2024. The very top line of the chart is just half of the year. From January to July of this year, we're already at over 600. And so by the end of the year, we're figuring that we will have at least 1,200 seniors that have come through and participated in these programs between the Monday, Wednesday, Friday fitness class that we're doing, the Tuesday, Thursday Tai Chi class, the weekly coffee club classes that are still happening. So it's all very exciting. And we just want to share all of that with you. It's been phenomenal. And we would love to have you guys come to a class. The Friday classes are the least attended, and you're more than welcome at 12:15 at the Parks and Rec.
Thank you for your support. We do appreciate it.
It's a great program, absolutely great program. A question. We used to do senior trips. Is it the limitation of not having the bus? Is that why we don't do them anymore?
The, the biggest drawback is, is transportation. When we, when we were doing them last rendition, we were partnering with Martha and Mary, and we were using their bus. Then when COVID happened, they weren't allowing anyone to use it, and the bus was not in great shape. Now it's probably more a matter of time to coordinate pulling a trip together and then finding the resources for a vehicle to do it.
Can I also speak to that, please? So I'd like to speak to that because we do get that asked a lot because we used to do senior trips. I know Bainbridge Island wrote a grant for having a driver with a CDL license. It's very costly. It's very expensive. They have their own bus. We don't. Also, if you're a member, and it's just an addition for the Paul'sbow Parks and Rec. If you're a member of Bainbridge Island Parks and Rec or Bremerton Parks Service for Seniors, you can be a member for $25, and they all run bus trips. So it's not like our seniors don't have access to that. I did quite a few studies on that. So there are accesses to that, other ways to get around. But at this point, I don't really see, that's my personal opinion. I don't, I don't really see that that would be something that would have to be right now.
I agree.
Maybe somewhere else, but not to have, you know, have to do the transportation or the programmings, or it's quite costly. I know that Bainbridge and Bremerton are, would be probably a little bit more than what our programs used to be, but they're still very affordable. So there is access for seniors to go on different trips.
All right. Thank you. We have Rick, and then we have Gary.
Yeah, I kind of wonder if kids have transit couldn't help with that. The access bus, just, they have, they have sort of vendor concierge type service already, if it could be something we could use.
That because that was one of the programs that I was tasked with to look into, so I totally don't mind looking into that.
Yeah, it just might be a way to.
I just know that there are, there are trips that they, that our seniors can go on in Bremerton or Bainbridge.
Yeah, and yeah, possibility. I just wanted to say, great. How wonderful. You've all done. And, you know, we, we hear a lot of negative about, you know, the city doesn't this, and the city doesn't that. But look at what we heard tonight already. Community Kitchen built, an officer buying meals for citizens. In the last month, we've heard Fishline and Kim building a kitchen over at Resource Recovery Center. As you said, a month. Two kitchens, food support, and Fishline. So those folks that say that the city's not doing, we are doing so much. It's unbelievable. And great job to all of you.
Gary, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I suggested this one other time, I think, within the last year. But, but I really think, given the growth in senior programming and some of the remodeled facilities and the increased level of activities we're offering at this building now, that it's really time to rebrand the Park and Rec Building into the Paul'sbow Recreation and Senior Center, something like that. Because without having a center, or at least people identifying that we have a center, I think we're hurting ourselves. And I think this would draw a lot more attention to what we do have to offer, help with continued growth, and better reflect what we're actually doing in that building. So I would really appreciate, Mayor, you and staff noodling on that, and maybe coming back to us with your thoughts and ideas. Thank you.
My only, my only concern right off the get-go, and I haven't thought it through, but I'll say, there is a senior center downtown. So the question becomes, if we call our Parks and Rec Building a senior center, then the next question is, well, what senior center is it at? Okay? So just keep that in mind. But I, I think we really do need to brand our senior services a little more effectively. And because I don't think a lot of people know that we're doing all this stuff. And I think that's, that's a worthy cause. Okay, more questions.
Pretty basic, but what is the age that is senior?
I'm going to laugh at that. Do you mind if I ask?
Go right ahead.
You know what you're a senior when you.
Because I'm going to laugh at that question. I started doing senior programs in my 40s at Paul'sbow Parks and Rec. Nobody said I couldn't. I showed up. They welcomed me. So I have been involved in senior programs for, I'm not even, yeah, just a couple, right?
Just a baby.
Just, just a couple. But because of me being involved in those senior, those senior programs, I went on to become a Parks Commissioner for eight years. I volunteered my time for over 20 years in 20, 30 years in Paul'sbow. So we do go on. We do go on. And just because we show up at the free programs, I'm in seven different programs at Paul'sbow Parks and Rec every week. So I pay to go to other programs. And most of our seniors, you'll find a lot of our seniors pay or are in paid programs, plus they have their grandkids in programs, paid programs. And so we do evolve into other things, and we do hang out at Parks and Rec a lot.
Okay, so my silver hair qualifies.
I don't think anyone's ever been kicked out of a senior.
We're, we're not going to turn anyone away.
ID you at the door.
Correct. There's no identification necessary.
No age check. You know when you're a senior. Okay, you know, you know when you're a senior. Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Are you, are we coordinating with the senior center downtown to highlight the programs there? Because yeah, that's, you know, that'll kind of solve a little bit of that issue when people show up there, they can see the programs that are offered at the Parks and Rec Center.
The Senior Center is actively engaged in our senior task force, and we are doing a good job of cross-promoting each other's programs. They are still a membership-driven organization, and there are some different things in the way that they're, they're, they're set up and they're structured and what it is that they're offering, and they do. But it's really nice that we have each other to collaborate with. And so I have always felt that we're not, we're not necessarily competition. We're just more opportunities for people to participate in different ways.
Thank you.
We complement one another.
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions? Good work. This is wonderful.
Thank you. We are just excited to share all the wonderful.
Thank you for your time, your support, and your support.
Okay, so the next thing we have is the special events of September, and this is Ms. Glasgow.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Good evening, community members. September has four annual events that are happening. We start with Pride in the Park on Saturday, September 6th. It's the annual LGBTQ Pride Celebration Festival. They're going to have food trucks, food booths, and over 400 participants. They're expecting plus 500 spectators and 100 staff and volunteers. It will be down at the Waterfront Park. Paul'sbow Kids Day is also happening on Saturday, September 6th. That will be up at the parking lot, First Security Bank, and Home Depot. Also, a annual event. They're expecting 700 spectators up there, 30 participants, and 30 staff and volunteers. We also have Paul's Brew happening on Saturday, September 20th. It's an annual beer and wine tasting event with music. They're expecting 400 participants and 30 staff and volunteers, and that's also at the Waterfront Park. North Kitsap High School Homecoming Parade is Wednesday, September 24th, also an annual event. It's the same route and everything that they do every year. They're expecting 100 participants and over 300 spectators, 20 staff and volunteers. It will start at the First Lutheran Church at Paul'sbow, and it ends at the Waterfront Park with a gathering. The one thing we are bringing new is the Viking Memorial Bonfire. It'll be Saturday, September 27th. It's a small event, a private memorial event, but it will run until 10:00 PM, which is after park hours. They're expecting 25 participants and 40 spectators with 25 staff and volunteers, and it's at the fire pit at the Waterfront Park. They are aware that there is a burn ban in effect right now, and they have made provisions for that.
Is this the Sons of Norway doing this? Oh, okay. Questions? Any questions?
Great.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, next up is the Kitsap Building Association ADU Build Partnership Caretakers Residence in Rom Park. And this is very interesting.
Good evening, council members of the public. Thank you for your patience. I am here tonight with Bernie Kenworthy from Access Consulting and also the KBA past president. As we've talked a lot about different issues tonight, we know it takes a village to make things happen. And as a city, we've been working towards moving the needle on getting missing middle housing built within our community. And one of our members of our tribe has been KBA. They've been very helpful through this process of us getting the pre-approved ADUs. They provided input to our architects so that we have plans that are meaningful within our community. They also had a home and expo show where they went out in the community and advertised our services. And about a month ago, at one of their meetings, I challenged their membership to be someone from their membership to be the first ones to build one of the ADUs. Who's going to do it? Well, KBA is rising to that occasion. So I briefed you a little bit on this last week, and I have a presentation to go into a little bit more details. So KBA is looking to partner with the city and also with other members within their group, which Bernie can speak to, but includes but not limited to Habitat for Humanity and Housing Kitsap. They're interested in building one of the 800-square-foot pre-approved unit plans that we have that's commonly known as the Sydney, and they want to do this as soon as possible. Last week I said five days, but that was a dream. I got a call right away. Why did you say five days? I'm like, that's what I was told. And they're like, you know, it may be quite a bit more, but they, but not a whole lot more. And Bernie can speak more to that. And fortunately, speaking to our leadership team, we had a piece of property where we think it would be ideal for this. And fortunately, speaking to our leadership team, we had a piece of property where we think it would be ideal for this to actually take place. We have some budgeted dollars to building such a unit, and it's at Rab Park, on Cowdard Avenue, for those who aren't aware. And we formally had a caretaker's unit. So the why behind this, I'm gonna let Bernie speak to, so.
Good evening. Ms. Heather said, my name is Bernie Kenworthy. I know a lot of you from many years of doing projects in the city of Paulsbow. I'm a local civil engineer and have been working in a lot of projects across the county over the past 25 years. And I've had the privilege to work with Heather and the mayor and Josh and Diane over the years as well. So this is a personal, kind of, I don't know, exciting project for me because I'm not only from Paulsbow, went to high school here, worked here. I had, I was talking to my husband a couple of days ago, telling him about this, and when we identified the Robb Park location, I was saying, yeah, we're gonna, you know, hopefully be able to redo the caretaker's residence. And as it turns out, he lived there as a young boy with his dad, who was the caretaker. I had no idea, so. It's, it's really personal for me, but I'm here to speak on behalf of the Kitsap Building Association, and I can say that our builder members are really excited and have been following this process that Heather and others have been spearheading. And you know, we just see ADUs as a really versatile and underutilized form of housing that can really help to address some of the housing supply needs. And so we see the collaboration as kind of a proof of concept. Nobody's done it yet, so it can help both sides kind of see how it goes. We think that probably the, kind of the biggest exciting piece is to showcase that permitting can be expedited, planning has already been done. And, you know, hopefully we'll be able to build this quickly. I'm not gonna commit to five days, but you know, we will be using volunteer labor, so we'll be working around people's personal personal jobs as well, but we're gonna look to get this done as quickly and as efficiently as we can. And so, you know, as Heather said, we're kind of working through some of the details, and we have formed an internal committee, and I just was talking to Mike Lund earlier. We'll be reaching out to the city to kind of, I think there's a lot of questions on both sides, but we're just really excited for the opportunity. So we hope you are too.
I think this is absolutely great. Thank you, KBA. Thank you, Bernie. I was trying to remember the first time I met Bernie. It was way back before I was even elected to council back in the old City Hall with Mark Coleman, Team Four member, anyway. And, you know, to have KBA, the Kitsap Building Association, step up and do something like this is very cool. And I'm deeply grateful. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you, Mayor. So I read the materials in the packet. Is it, my understanding, we've budgeted $200,000 for a new caretaker's residence. We were planning to put a mobile home in there, correct? So are we thinking that our budgeted $200,000 would be used for construction materials? Is that what we're thinking? And then with some labor from some of these organizations, we might be able to do it for that amount? Is that, is that what we're thinking?
So at this time, what KBA is hoping to offer, and of course, all the details are getting worked out, is all the labor would be volunteer. There may be some subs that they're gonna have to hire out at prevailing wage, of course, but at this time, the challenge is to do it through their membership, through volunteer hours, very similar, but on a much larger scale to the Rotary Pavilion that was just completed. That was all done with volunteer hours, and then we would cover the cost of the materials.
Okay, all right. And 800 square feet, how does that compare to what we were thinking in terms of a a mobile home up there? Is it a little bit smaller, I'm assuming?
It's a little smaller, not.
A little smaller, not much? Okay.
I can show in this image, and then Mike is coming up to help pinch hit this one and let me know what the square footage was before, but this is a, you'll see the outline of the whitish blue. It was the previously existing caretaker's unit, and then the outline of the pink is the proposed for 800 square foot pre-approved ADU. And then, Mike, if you want to speak some more.
Yeah, so the old trailer that was up there was about, if I remember right, about 1,500 square foot, four-bedroom, double-wide. It was, it was, it was actually quite large for up there, been up there for since the 70s. So we talked about, we went multiple different directions, thinking about whether we want to do a small trailer, large trailer, lots of different things. And then we were kind of all in limbo, still trying to figure it out, and then this popped up, and I think this is ideal. A two-bedroom is perfect to find a, a nice retired couple or somebody that wants to do it. So it's gonna, I think it's a nice little, little addition to the park.
My recollection from when we were initially having these conversations with you, Mike, when the, when the existing, you know, trailer was really getting into bad shape, was that we, I feel like I recall us saying smaller would probably be the direction we'd be headed anyway with the replacement. So I think this seems great.
Yes.
I love this.
Yeah, it's, it seems like things are coalescing. It sounds exciting. I think it'd be wonderful to have one of the ADUs here for people to see and experience and and kind of catch the fever, so to speak. But it sounds like we need some more details yet before we can make any real decisions, but I guess I'm assuming you're looking tonight for, yes, please proceed full speed ahead. Is that what we're looking for?
That's right, council. So you'll see within your pocket, and I have just a brief outline here, there was a memorandum of understanding. Includes the city's commitments and KBA's commitments. As Bernie said, there's some details we're still working out. And originally, this was, the goal was to have this built before our ADU open house on September 16th, and we've, we've discussed and regrouped that it's gonna take a little bit more, but we'll be advertising instead that this is happening. And so because of that, I had originally requested that this get forwarded to our consent agenda on the 20th. I'm gonna ask to hold off on that. KBA is committed to bringing some bids back to you all, so you have the assurance that it's gonna be within that $200,000 ballpark. Once we have those bids, then we'll bring this back to consent agenda or business agenda and give the mayor the authority to sign that. And that's what I'm just looking for overall, thumbs up that we can keep moving on this track.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I just have a question. I know we're not voting tonight, but the sample motion where it says, sign you with KBA Association for the land and materials. We're obviously retaining ownership of this, so I wasn't sure about why we're throwing for the land into the motion. Is that something you could explain?
Can you tell me?
The one that's in the, on the agenda now.
Can you read it out loud for me, please?
Yeah, it says, we'll sign an MOU with Kitsap Building Association for the land and materials for the construction of the caretaker residence.
So we're committing to the land and the materials, donating of the land, correct.
Okay, I, you know, just when I read that in the packet, it was a little weirdly worded, and I was.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, why we're throwing land in there?
Because we're committing our lands to that development.
I, I won't. Yeah, I, I won't lie, I was looking forward to Extreme Home Makeover Paulsbow Edition in five days, but if we can, you know, okay, five days is probably quick, but quick is quick, so. You know, that would have been fun, and especially if we had some stop motion and, and, you know, track the progress and build and, you know, so.
We have a lot of people on our committee that are on vacation. So when everybody gets back into one spot, we'll, we'll definitely be laying down the construction costs as well as schedule and get that back to you all.
So six days?
Six days.
Mr. Sharon, go ahead.
I couldn't be more enthusiastic, and Heather and Mayor and staff. This is a great initiation, first swing of the bat at what's been two years in the making at Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. And to have a demonstration ADU in a public park with public parking right there, it's something that the four cities and the county that will be availing themselves of this project, let alone the developers can come, Bernie, and see. I, I couldn't be more enthusiastic.
Oh, I think it's really good. And I, you know, I want to say, give a big thank, thank you to the state legislature, actually, because it's something that I'd been advocating for for years, to have multiple ADUs on a lot. And I was accused of all kinds of nefarious things by even bringing that up. And so now we're to the point where the state is saying you can do that. Now we need to have the tools, and that's what we're trying to, trying to put together here. So it's a, it's, it's a good thing. So you're gonna come back and give us more at a later point. And, you know, if, if I can help in any way rounding up developers or whatever, job-owning people, I'll be more than happy to help do that, you know, so. Appreciate it. I mean, this is, this is a big deal. The only other thing I would ask, however, is we don't move anybody into it immediately. I'd like to have like a month period where consumers and other builders and people can come and look at it.
Absolutely.
And so that they know what these things look like, you know, display boards about the other models, et cetera, in there so they can see what it looks like.
With, with the banner of we were first.
Do we, do we have a park caretaker currently?
Public Works is doing it right now.
Public Works is doing it, okay.
Alongside KBA to develop the fact sheet as people come see this, because of the streamlined permitting, the reduced impact fees, the hookup fees, and the structures that are allowed to make this as efficient and as streamlined as possible are also revolutionary, separate from the footage itself. So it's a win-win-win.
We're headed, we're all headed, we need to get affordable housing for people, and this is one of the steps. So any other questions for Heather or Bernie? Two thumbs up. Oh, go ahead.
You guys know I tend to get into the weeds, so regarding the, you know, some of the trimmings, like the appliances and stuff like that. So it sounds like the building material is the 200,000, and thank goodness the land's donated, and you know, folks will be volunteering to build. What about those other pieces? I know it's a drop in the bucket, but.
Our estimate is that it would cover all those costs, but we are waiting to find, to firm all that up. And then those details, there's a lot of details that are gonna need to be figured out. Some of it will depend on supply, but we do have some QC with our Public Works Department, they will be reviewing those bills and ensuring that it, it matches with the sustainability and plan for the use of the structure.
That's amazing. That, that's so cool. I'm thrilled, so. Yeah, well done.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Doug.
This is more of a shout out. If anyone ever needs an appliance picked up, Habitat for Humanity will pick up appliances from your house. So that's just a nice service, and then they go to projects like this.
All right, thank you. Okay, lots of feel-good things tonight. Let's talk to Dave Houseberry and Chief Harding about the police marine patrol. How's the bay?
Evening, council, Mayor. And while Brooks is helping us get some photographs set up here, I'll turn this over to Dave, but we just wanted to let you know that this is an update on the work that the community and the council asked us to begin several months ago. And we've accomplished a lot of great work. Dave will update you about details. And we're at a little bit of a crossroads. We need some direction for one of our next steps. That's fairly significant, but I'll let, I'll let Dave describe all of that.
So this picture is a little bit deceiving because it was taken last weekend. There were a lot of visitors, which is what you're gonna, which is what most of these are. So it is a little more scaled down than last time you saw kind of an overall view. I don't have an exact count of where we're at. It's a little more difficult now because of all the people coming and going for summer. However, what we're focusing hard on is the occupied vessels, the, the ones that are the real problems that we've talked about before. Yeah, we're pretty much down to the circled ones, which are all tagged for, for custody, which is one of the, the first process. I don't know how well you see that on the screen, but this one is, is different because that person was actually trespassed for some nefarious activity up on the port. So the port trespassed him. And he's leaving for other reasons. And he was in here, he just came in a few weeks ago, or maybe a month ago or so. So these all have been here forever, and they've been part of the problem. This is a specific camp that I want to show you more detailed photos of. And they, these are all tagged, these are all occupied, and these are all tagged right now. There's more. There's eight total that are tagged for, for custody as of the 27th, but logistically, it's gonna be a little after that, when we would actually be able to do something. So I just want to show you what this camp actually looks like right now. That's a pretty good, that's exactly what it looks like. And so, as you can see on all these, we've tagged them for, it's part of the state law. We've tagged them to take custody of them. And I've kind of, as I've, I've said to a couple of you individually, at different points, we've niced them to death. And they know very well that they're way over their time. They were all tagged in March. They've received warning letters. They're at the point now where they just.
They were tagged in March, is that what you said?
They were given warnings in March, yeah.
At March.
Yeah, and then they were given written warnings two months ago. I've tried to talk to them, they, they don't. Most of the people in this group don't talk to me, or don't talk to law enforcement, so we're pretty much at the point where we're probably going to just need to impound, take their votes and, and get rid of this problem that you see. It is the focus of the problem that we've talked about before, of stuff going into the bay and really the root cause of why we're doing this. And so where we're at, and what the chief alluded to, is that that's not something that comes free, taking their vote and dealing with that, which we've talked about before. There is reimbursement through DNR, and I know some of you guys are familiar with that. You sent me some info. And it's first come, first served. It opened up July 1st. There is money available now, as long as I keep them in the loop, which I'm doing. And once we take custody, basically, the request would be, if that's your direction, to set the tone for the bay and send the message that this is how we're going to handle things. And I, I really feel like some of the other issues will resolve, because there are more. Like I said, there's eight total that are tagged now, but there's four more that need to get tagged, that are less of a priority. They're pumping and for various other reasons. So I'd like to send the message to this, if that's your direction, that would take some money, because that's not free. It is reimbursed by DNR. Hopefully, all of it will be reimbursed. There's no guarantee of that. Don't want to promise you that, because I don't know what's up to DNR. But most of the time, this early in the budget cycle, that's, that's pretty common to get most of the funds back.
Okay, so I saw Mr. Tabor. Go ahead.
First off, thank you for your work, and I hope you're enjoying the new truck. I saw you in it the other day. The question I was gonna ask is, so we know these are probably just bad ecological actors. They're not taking care of the water in the bay. Are there, do you, do you, do you get a sense that there are any liveaboarders that are trying to be good actors or are trying to be, you know, like good community members, so to speak, and not just, you know, polluting? But, yeah, that's my, my main question, I guess.
The good ones, personally, if that's the right way to say that, the cooperative ones have left and followed the rules. There are, there are four that are gone, that worked with me, were texting me, calling me. And when you were on the ride-along, the individual in the bay that was in the boat that couldn't pull his anchor is long gone. He was one of them. You know, that did pumping and did what he was supposed to do. So the ones that are left are the opposite of that.
Gotcha. And just to add a little further context, when Sergeant Houseberg started this, his initial assessment was that there were somewhere over 30 vessels that were not authorized or had violated the rules and exceeded their ability to stay. Through the work that they've done and the repeated emphasis with training on, of new officers, we're now down to about eight or so?
It's hard to say. I, I really, I can't get a good number because of all the vessels that are now, but somewhere in that ballpark, yeah.
And this little flotilla that they've constructed, I mean, they've lashed these together. And the tactics that they have used when officers approach is to just hide. They won't engage with us, they won't talk. So we really don't know how many people are on it. We have some intel of certain characters that have come on to town and committed various crimes that they're living here. But we feel like taking this and sending a message will set a new tone that they've already established. I mean, there have, so many have moved out because a lot of people are willing to follow the rules once they understand the rules will be enforced. This is the remnant that won't. And we think it could be up to about $20,000 that we would have to front, but the DNR costs would reimburse that if, if we get everything done.
Is that for all the eight?
That's for all those, for this flotilla.
Oh, just for this flotilla?
Okay, we have Mr. Eckert and Mr. Stern, and then Miss Lipton.
So I'm assuming we talked about DNR, that's the money we talked about before, the, the fund for boats that were sinking, correct?
It's for derelict and abandoned vessels, for these.
But it sounds like these, we're, we're getting a little bit more into the criminal world. So could the Coast Guard be helpful in this if, if you can chat criminal?
This is a municipal enforcement act. It's ours. And, and the, the other thing that. And, and the, the other thing that they'll do is they'll, they kind of know the water boundaries. So they'll sometimes float into county and then float back into Pauls Bow, but we're approaching this as it's Liberty Bay. It's ours.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if, if we were getting away from the DNR ecological sinking vessel world and more into a criminal environment, could Coast Guard be of?
Yeah. The only thing is that we know that they anecdotally, some of these residents, because we haven't even identified all of them, have been here and, you know, shoplifting, things like that. We're acting on the authority of the derelict vessels. That's what's giving us the ability to take this enforcement. Um, we may encounter, yeah. And, and we may encounter someone that has felony warrants or something like that, but we're acting on the authority of the, the derelict vessels.
Is there a possibility, once you take possession of the vehicle, of the vessels, should it real, go into the criminal realm, say, once you have access to the interiors, could that become, I, I'm hoping for the chance of being able to get funding from other sources, essentially what I'm thinking after. Um, you know, especially you go inside and you find that there's other stuff going on. Could then, could that open up another way to get reimbursed?
I doubt it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We have Mr. Stern and then Miss Lipton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, when Officer Houseburg was first hired on and we reinvigorated our marine unit, I know Mr. Tabor and I were one of the first to do what I call a boat along instead of a police ride along. Firstly, I'd like to say my observation, and I've spoken before from the dais, Officer Houseburg should really be working for the State Department. He is something of a diplomat. His approach out there is personal, it's relational, it's supportive and it's caring. You have to work hard to get on the other side of Officer Houseburg. And so I want to acknowledge that, Mayor. We couldn't have a better officer chief than Officer Housework out on the water. Uh, I fully support this and stand ready to back it up with or without DNR. The word has gone out that Liberty Bay is something of a shelter throughout the Puget Sound because of its proximity, its weather patterns, access to the downtown and immediate services. It's almost like a houseboat homeless encampment that's known up and down the Puget Sound. So the idea, Mayor, of getting the word out by action will help offset that reputation that we've begun to earn wrongfully. But again, uh, compliments to Officer Houseburg on his approach. I, I really appreciate the way you're doing this, Dave.
Okay. Miss, Miss Lipton and then Mr. Eckert and then Miss Crow.
Frankly, when you said 20,000, it didn't actually seem that bad to me. I mean, boats are expensive things to deal with. And I know that the process, the legal process is arduous, but, um, I mean, can we really put a price on one, the reputation that is, you know, we, we don't want to have and, um, polluting the bay? I mean, that's just, it'll, it'll be far more expensive to clean up later. So I say do it and do it now. Well, there might still be some funds from the state.
Okay. So we have, um, Ms. Crowe and then Mr. Eckert again.
Definitely in support of this. Um, so question is, and taking, did you say possession or custody? I want to use the right terminology. Um, so do they have opportunity to get their boat back, which I think would be unlikely? And then if they, if that does pass, um, what happens to the boats? Are they auctioned? And then another question, first of all, that is so, uh, that's unsafe, obviously. I mean, I'm like, whoa. Uh, if you ran into children, um, would you have to report that? I'm assuming, um, so I'm just curious.
There's a lot to that. So, um, I hope, uh, if I forget anything, please let me know. Um, the first thing is, uh, that, uh, as far as I know, there's no children. I think I would see that. I don't think the children would, would hide like, like the adults are. So I think we're okay. But if we ran into that situation, absolutely, we would get Child Protective Services involved and, and, and go down that road and make sure that they're, they're taken care of. Um, the money, uh, just to help you guys out with, with multiple questions, just a little bit. So we're getting that, um, from the county and Bainbridge Island who deal with this, um, way more than I have and, and pretty frequently. Um, county has a specific person that, that does this almost full time of just dealing with derelict vessels around the county. Um, and then Bainbridge does a very good job of, uh, keeping theirs cleaned up. Um, and so I've been talking with them and trying to work with them. Uh, they're willing to help and they would help in this operation as well when it comes time to do this. They say it's about $3,000 if we transport the vessel to the destruction, um, and, and they get destroyed. Um, because basically, you know, as the chief alluded to, we're working for DNR here under state law. Um, DNR has given us the power to do their job essentially. Um, and that's why they reimburse us, um, when the funds are available. They're not, they don't want them back. Their goal is to make sure they never get back more. Yeah. The owners do have a right to appeal. Um, most of that appeal date is after custody date, just by state law. Um, so they can appeal, but most likely the vessel will be taken care of at that, by that point. Yeah.
Okay. We have Mr. Eckert again, and then Mr. McVey.
Uh, yeah, just kind of with what I was saying about, you know, the word is out. The bad word is out at this point. Um, I, once this, we, we're done with this evolution. I would say if there's any way that we can now encourage media attention to the fact that we are cleaning this up and that this is no longer the case, um, whether that's the Sun, the Herald, Seattle Times, whomever we can to get attention, to get the word back out that this is not the place to come. I think that would be the best, a, a good use of the media's attention. Um, because, you know, just like our efforts on the combating drugs arena, you know, as much word that we can get out that Paulsville is not the place you want to be to do these things, Liberty Bay is not the place, the better.
Okay. Mr. McVey.
Thanks, Mayor. Knowing what I do about this and how long, um, we've been engaging with these folks and trying to, to do something in a, in a, in a fair, uh, way. Uh, I'm supportive of spending up to $20,000 to, uh, take custody, uh, of these boats. I, I guess I would ask, you know, um, uh, clearly there's a reason people are on these boats. Um, um, they can't afford to live elsewhere. They have alcohol, drug problems, who knows? But I guess I would ask if we could do it in as humane a way as possible, uh, have people from Housing Kitsap, Fish Line, our own North Kitsap Recovery Center available, uh, to meet with these folks when they come off the boats. Um, I think that would be the, the least we could do in that situation. Um, and I think that would be, uh, I would feel better about it, but, uh, we need to do, we need to take control of the, uh, of this situation. I think it's just gotten to be too long and too much.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, up to the point where you go to take custody of the vessel, these folks can follow the rules and leave, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I hope they do.
Yes, right. Would save us all a lot of time and money. Okay.
So whoever's out there, you better listen to this conversation. Maybe it's time to pull anchor. So, okay. Um, I'm hearing pretty much the consensus to move forward in this kind of behavior. We, what we will do is we'll figure out, um, what the budget amendments look like in order to pay for whatever fees we're going to have to do, but, um, this can't go on. So, um, that's what I'm hearing from the council, right? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. We'll be back and update.
Thank you. Okay. So now we have the building department update and this is Mr. Chapel, but he's not here. So Diane's going to be filling in for Alan.
Good evening. I'd just like to sh- share a few words about the building department. Alan Chapel is, um, he's sick today and put together a presentation and was very excited to share it with you. Um, but he was unable to make it. And, um, I think what I'll do is just give you a few highlights and then kick the presentation down the road. Um, we do have a new building team and you haven't met them unless you've come in for a building permit, but Fay at the front desk has been with us for two years. Our building inspector has been here for four months and our building deputy building official has been in place for about four to six months. Um, they're in the process of taking some certifications. I currently serve as the building official. As, um, public works director has oversight over the building department until they have completed taking their exams. And, um, they've been making great progress on that. Right now, building is full speed in Pauls Bow. Um, my years of experience and intuition has been expecting a little bit of a slowdown with interest rates rising. Um, we haven't actually seen that yet. We have a couple of fairly good sized department buildings, um, ready to come online and apply for their building permits or pay for their building permits, um, which means that building will continue to be strong, assuming those projects move forward. Um, for those of you who've driven around, um, all of the developments continue to um, build. And for those of you involved in real estate, you know more than I do about the market for, um, the sales. Um, I'm very proud of the building department team, the work they've been doing. We are moving toward a paperless operation and we continue to make steps in that direction. Um, we have a young team that is eager to learn and they are constantly, um, seeking out new information to learn. They're also excited about Heather's ADU project with KBA. Um, they, they have a vision of a team working very hard to make it happen and they will be available for inspections. I'm impressed that when someone calls for an inspection in Pauls Bow, typically within 24 hours and the inspection happens. When they call for information, typically within the same day or 24 hours, they get a call. It might be, I know the answer or I don't know the answer, but they typically get a call back. Um, we still provide counter service. That means someone comes to the counter, um, they get someone to speak to. If no one is available, then they get an appointment. So I think we are maybe the Nordstroms of, um, delivery in the, the building department. So my hat is off to them. I'd like them all to come in and meet you. And, um, they deserve all the thanks for their great work. So that's all I have to say.
All right. Thanks, Diane. Doug has a quick question. Go ahead, Doug.
It's actually not, it's kind of to add on to that. I actually, um, saw a, a foreman who was on a construction site here in town, saw, uh, saw me hooking up something and he came out and talked to me. And I said, how do you like working in, on Pauls Bow? And he's like, well, I worked for this construction company for 15 years. And we love Pauls Bow. We love working here. Um, they do great work and we do great work and it like, it's a good relationship. So. We'll hear.
That's cool. And hats off to the team. So, thank you.
Gary, go ahead.
I had a question, Dan. Um, I, I hear that too, Doug, from contractors I've worked with too. So, um, kudos to you, Diane and your team. So, um, a quick question, do you have any idea when the last time we would have had a building inspector go in the Albertson's building? Um, you know, the, as we all know, uh, the Albertson's building has now been vacant for nine years. Um, we, we have tried, particularly the mayor has tried many times over the years to try to engage with those folks, to try to get them to do something with that building. But I was in there last fall for the Halloween, the temporary Halloween store that we allow to operate in there. And just looking around, I, I just can't imagine that that structure, um, is still safe and, uh, uh, up to code enough to allow people inside. And I get concerned about, um, you know, what could happen to the neighboring properties, uh, with the derelict condition of that building. Is there any update you can give us on that?
Of course. Um, thank you. We have not had a reason to go in the building, but there is an application for a temporary use permit for the Halloween event again. And in talking with our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Heather, um, I know that we have a condition that it will be inspected by the building department before they move ahead with that this year. So that's our opportunity to trigger an inspection to take a look. And if there's any specifics that anybody has that they want us to take a close look at, definitely let me know, Alan or James. Um, so we can take a tight look there. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to having Alan come back and he's going to come back and do the presentation.
I, I am too, because he was really excited to come and talk to you, maybe a little fearful too. So please welcome him when he comes.
He's a really good guy and he's doing really good work. So I really look forward to it and we'll schedule him up next week or the week after or something.
That's fantastic, Mayor. The one thing I would say about this team, and it's true for all three of them, they are quietly amazing. So they're, they are not, um, out to seek praise, but they deserve a lot of praise. So I'm excited to bring them forward. Thank you.
Mr. Stern, go ahead.
It could, back to the Albertsons, it could be Mayor, that we have the opportunity in planning department to issue the first certified haunted house permit based on the degradation of the facility, which is a hallmark of a haunted house.
Actually, you might be the first city that actually implements a vacancy tax. Okay. Go ahead.
I'm just a question for you, Diane, since they're not here. Um, based on the level of service they're providing, and there's only three of them. I mean, is that, what would you say as far as that? Is, is that a good ratio? Is it a not a good ratio?
It's, it's a good ratio. Um, it's hard to manage the peaks and valleys, um, in building because there are big peaks and valleys. Um, we do have a retired building official. Her name is Jeanne Vaughn from the city of Birmingham. She works as a casual labor and so she helps us with overflow work when she's not on a, um, a cruise because she's retired. And sometimes even when she's on the cruise, she will review the bigger apartments for us, the commercial buildings and take the load off of our staff. Um, we also are looking to have, um, a company like Code Pros that regularly does review as a backup resource. So I think we do a good job. Um, I would say that what we do in a year, Kitsap County does in a month in a good year. I mean, that's how we compare to something like, um, Kitsap County. And when you look at the number of staff we have, we're, we're about right. Um, we tend to run a little lead and, and have high quality folks working hard.
So it sounds like, so you have a plan when you need it for additional, you're not looking at growing the department at all?
Yeah.
And you're still doing more than.
We're doing great.
Or bigger departments.
We're, we're doing great.
Not to be named.
The, the other thing is both Josh Rains, we have a lot of Joshes. Josh Rains, City Engineer, and I back up the building department. So, um, and Michael Bateman, actually, on certain things, um, we're very capable of looking up information and getting back to people. So the, um, second floor including, including planning tends to jump in and help each other out. So.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mayor, uh, in, in regards to staffing and meeting demand, and as Diane just shared with us, they're, they're lean but efficient. A lot, you've heard about the market upsurges the last week or two, certainly in the stock market, but it's really a bet on interest rate markets that there'll be a cut in September and some more before year end. That would be like steroids into the housing and building market. Uh, have we given, is our capacity and flexibility there to deal with a potential upsurge? Because we've been one of the exceptions to the rule as far as our stability and trend on development, but it could really spike.
I think, I think we're, we're judging, uh, the best we can. Um, um, even if the interest rates go up, you just don't start a new project like this. Okay. There's, there's, there's timings here that, that have to be, um, addressed. Uh, right now we're doing okay. Um, you know, I, uh, Rob and I have been, are very careful about staffing. You know me, I want a code enforcement officer. That's the next one. It'll chase the Albertson's door. Okay. Um, and help take some of the burden off the building department for simple things like, you know, the neighbor that puts his fence a foot over into the easement and, you know, the guy that has four chickens in his backyard, all that stuff. Okay. We don't have anybody to address those things. That's, that to me is the next, next step. So I'm really looking forward to Alan coming and presenting. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we have updated countywide center designations for SR 305, and this is Heather.
I do want to echo in and share my appreciation for the building department too. And I am excited that you'll be able to meet Alan. They are an amazing group to work alongside. Um, one of the best I've ever worked with. Um, so for tonight's discussion about countywide centers, uh, good news. You do not have to make any hard decisions on this. Um, this is just an update and the other good news is like all the hard work has been done. But I just wanted to set the stage, uh, for you all and for those who aren't familiar with what it means to be a center and. and why this matters, I just wanted to walk through with you all the process that I'm about to embark on with K R C C. Let me see here, sorry. And I'm going to share a very short presentation with you all tonight. All right, here we go. And then I click up here, correct? To make it big?
It's in the way.
That thing just keeps blocking me.
Click, click here.
It does it every time. Sorry. There we go. Ta-da. All right. So we have gone through the process of allocating our growth numbers, 5,600 roughly, right? And we chose in our alternative three and four, looking at concentrating that growth in SR 305. The next level then will be for us to actually designate that center as a countywide center. Council already decided, previous council, when we updated our Kitsap countywide planning policies, that SR 305 was a candidate countywide center. So now what I'm doing is I'm scratching out the word candidate and I'm moving it forward to become a countywide center. It is a requirement that we have a center of growth. And just as a reminder, this is the area that we're looking at. You can't see the zoning overlay, but if I were to overlay the SR 305 zoning, it would incorporate all of this area plus additional area. I did include an additional area that's north of here because it actually brought down what's called an activity unit. That is a ratio of our population and employment that Puget Sound Regional Council does in a magic little vacuum and gives me this magic number. And we don't meet the activity unit requirement when we take in larger areas. So this meets the P S R C criteria. And why does this matter? Why am I here with you all tonight? Well, I'm taking, starting the process by taking it to the Land Use Technical Advisory Committee, which is comprised of all the directors in September. They're going to receive a memo that I included in your packet that really outlines all the hard work that you all have done in our, on all of our plans, our comprehensive plan implementation documents. And then they take this through an adoption process with their board. And at the end of the day, what this means for us is we will be more competitive for funding when we go forward for asking for grants in the transportation world. So by becoming a center, we're more eligible for dollars with our grant cycle. And that's why this work is worthy, but I didn't want you all to not know that it was happening behind the scenes. Any questions about this? Comments?
Just a little history, and I know the mayor, you hear about it more than anyone, but there's this perception from time to time, various quarters, that Paulsboro is very development hungry, that there isn't a development we won't approve, that we want the tax dollars, that we risk the charm and the character of the community. It was a little over 20 years ago, the council made a conscious decision to resist a transportation center designation. We were approached and we said, we do not want this. It went to Silverdale. We didn't want any part of it. We were concerned about maintaining character and charm and that. So this coming the way it is, is a long time coming. And Paulsboro resisted it in the past for the very reason that we're not growth hungry. We're not just after every tax dollar in sight, but it is a new day and age in the transportation corridors. And like Heather said, I mean, it's almost required of us. And if we, and other cities resist this, it would be futile because as the mayor knows, the legislature would come in and preempt the whole restriction on zoning and codes and take it over.
Well, the real point of it is, is that if we say no, we're just not going to do this. We're already meeting all the criteria that would allow us to have this designation. So we have the pain, but none of the gain of the financial pieces to pay for it. Okay? So, I mean, it's dumb. It's like saying, you know, I don't want my name to be, you know, Josephina because I don't like the sound of it, even though my name is Josephina. I mean, we are already it. Okay? We already meet the definition. We already have the density levels. We already have the activity units. So if we already have it, why shouldn't we call it that? And then get the money that we need to support it? I mean, it's a nutty argument. Go ahead. I think Gary's first and then you, Rick.
Thanks Mayor. Yeah, and I, you know, at least in the, let's see, 30 or so years that I have been associated or lived in Paulsboro in one way or another, it seems to me most of the growth in the highway 305 corridor has really been organic growth, right? I mean, over a long, to your point, at over a long period of time. And there's still an awful lot of, you know, small businesses in that corridor. Yes, there's some corporate entities such as T N C Markets, Discount Tire and some others, but there's still a heck of a lot of small businesses in there that do well. And some of them have continued to grow over the years. So I think this makes perfect sense. Appreciate Heather, you briefing us. So we were in the loop and it sounds like an exciting opportunity for us to get some grant funding to continue to improve that area and make sure it grows in the right way.
Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, and to that, you know, if we look at the map, how small the area outlined in this is compared to the overall city, the best way that I see to combat the idea of losing the character of the city is to concentrate it in this area. It's away from downtown. It's away from our most of our neighborhoods. It's away from our ridge tops. So it's, it's not in the areas that would cause people to say, you're killing Paulsboro. You're getting, we're concentrating in the area where it seems to make the absolute most sense and it caused the least damaging to our character, to use that phrase. Right, it's on the highway now. I honestly, I mean, when I think about Paulsboro 50 years from now, this is the area of the city that I assume will be the most different, not the rest of the city. It's because this is where it makes sense to change. It's where, I mean, we just talked about Albertsons. I mean, Paulsboro Village has done an amazing job to stay vibrant with that hole in the middle of that shopping center for 10 years. You know, we've done so much, and so anyway, what I was going to say is, I thank you for bringing this. I really liked in reading through this, it combines the work we did on raising heights. It combines the complete streets. It combines the comprehensive plan. It could, like, there are so many things, the work that we have done already, the growth, how we want growth to occur, all these things that we've been doing for the last, the time that I've been on council and the time I've been watching council before that. This feels like it's a culmination of so much work coming together in one thing to take it forward. And it's like all these disparate things coming together. The only other thing I can see that would be as meaningful as this is what we've talked about downtown and taking Front Street, Third Avenue, the parking lots and all that, and doing the same thing down there, which we're doing too. So, great job.
Mr. Stern.
Just adding to Rick's remarks, our mixed use where, as the mayor said, the demand right now is residential and has been for a number of years and not commercial per se. But by the fact that we can allow that first floor usage to be convertible back to commercial, should the markets dictate that? But in the meantime, if it's residential, let it be residential. We then preserve the commercial corridor should times change.
And there's already empty commercial in this very zone.
Exactly. And we know it's, you know, we're, it's the right thing. We already have the numbers. It's the right thing to do. So we already have the definition. All right. Any questions for Heather about this?
Thank you, Council, so much.
All right, let's see. Now we're on to amendment of the Paulsboro Municipal Code, Chapter 10 dot 12, Parking Regulations to Adjust Fees and Reflect Third-Party Enforcement. And this is Rhiannon and Heather.
Council, you may recall that Rhiannon and I came to you all in May to propose an increase in fee structure. We currently have fines downtown at $30 for overparking. And there was a sentiment expressed that we increased that to $60. And so this amendment incorporates that. And then there was also requests specifically geared towards, we're going to be creating the employee parking, some designated employee parking. We don't know exactly how much, but there was a desire to see those specific areas increase the fine. If you were not given an employee permission or tag at the time, then you would receive a $250 fine. And so that has been expanded to include other zones where you're illegally parking to increase that fine to 250. And then lastly, the reason why this ordinance has taken some time to get back to you, Rhiannon did all the hard work. She took it to Emily for review. But because of our decision to hire a third party enforcement, and then that is now also being managed by the police department, we wanted to reflect that change within our municipal code as well. So with that, I'm going to just, again, briefly reiterate what I just said. So the fine for illegal parking is within those exclusive employee parking zones. It's in the loading zone and I want to pause with that for a moment because Councilmember Eckert asked a really great question, good couple of questions about what that means exactly. And can, is it limited to commercial businesses only? Those few loading zones that we have downtown, which we know some of those are being occupied by our streeterries, for those that are actually functioning as loading zones? Who can park there? Is it a commercial vehicle? Can a vehicle park there? And then also, it is called a passenger curb loading zone. It's not actually called a commercial loading zone. So we're going to change that. So we're going to specify that it's a commercial loading zone, but it is allowed for anyone that is loading and unloading. I know from speaking with some downtown businesses, it may be your own personal vehicle that you need to bring in and unload your equipment. So we don't want to limit what type of vehicle parks there, but we do want to limit the duration. So I will be making a slight adjustment to that to reflect that it is for commercial businesses that those zones are available for. And then this is another area where I'm going to be bringing back, actually, Rhiannon's going to bring back a change to you all if you do move this forward to next week's for the consent agenda. Is that correct? Our business agenda? Business or consent? It can go on either. We do not have to hold a public hearing. The other thing we're going to potentially modify is this idea of a tiered fence. So this was not what you all asked for. I did brief you all on it last week. It was a recommendation from Laz Consulting. Instead of this $60 fine, since we're going to be implementing this new system, it's brand new to everyone. Some jurisdictions have this tiered approach. So wrote that in the ordinance and passed it on for our police to weigh in on and for our court to weigh in on and our management team. And one thing I didn't realize, I learned every step of the way of this parking process is that there, in the residential zones, this tiered approach wouldn't work with the equipment that we currently have. They have no way to know without a lot of behind the scenes work if this is your first tier, second or third offense. And so the options for us today is for me, and then sorry, one other piece of this important piece of the puzzle, is that not only does Laz, will Laz be enforcing our enforcement area, but our police will still be enforcing our enforcement area and can proceed with ticketing based on things that they observe. They're not prohibited from that. And so then the ordinance would have to be written that is, as long as it's a Laz ticket, it's tiered. And that is super messy. So I would like to just retain and retract that proposal and retain what you all originally proposed, which is the $60 fine. Courts can change fines if they want to. People can always plead. That system is still available. But if I see enough agreement, then we will proceed with that. And then lastly, as I said, it grants third party enforcement. It outlined that Public Works is in charge of signs and it grants police authority. So those are the changes that are before you tonight. So I'm going to stop sharing here and then just ask if they're, oh, and there's also reparking. If anyone wants me to speak to that, I did include that in your memo. I can pull it up on the screen. It is on the screen. That reparking, that was something you all had asked about. It is already included within our code, so I didn't propose any changes to it. So now I'll stop sharing and see if there's any questions or comments.
Okay, we have Mr. McVay, Mr. Eckert and then Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Heather, for your good work on this. You didn't have any idea you were going to become a parking czar when you joined us, did you? But thank you. I read the materials in the advanced packet. I think it looks good. The reparking explanation was clear to me. Honestly, I was still hoping that we would be up closer to at least $75 for an offense. We're trying to change behaviors here. I'm not sure if $60 is going to do it for some folks. So I would support $60 with the understanding that we're going to go up to 75 pretty soon. So I just, if we're going to do it, let's do it right. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, so we have Mr. Eckert and then Ms. Crowe and then Mr. Tabor.
Yeah, I agree with Carrie. I, I had, I was going to bring up concern with the tiered system because if we give a warning for the first couple of weeks and then it's only 30 and then it's 40, like it's four tickets till you're paying 60. And so I'm glad we're going with 60, but I would agree, I think I'm kind of concerned 60 is even a little too low, especially when you factor in changing behavior and how much it costs our staff from the parking enforcement person, whether that's our contractor or our police officer, all the way through the system, the court and everybody, to process that ticket. I mean, we can end up costing money in the end. So yeah, I would agree. I would even go higher, but if we started 60 for now and change later, I guess. Thank you for the updates. And then you had mentioned you're going to look at to the, our 15 minute quick stop spots to make sure those are clearly labeled so folks know. We do have places you can park real quick, run in, grab your coffee and run out, but those are very limited and those are not the places I was concerned about. Because what I asked her is, I said, I see a lot of people, personal cars parked in those places that are supposed to be, you know, the businesses unloading zones and there's nobody around, which means they're using them as parking. So that's what was the genesis of that question. So thank you.
Okay, we have Ms. Crowe and then Mr. Tabor.
I really appreciate all of the hard work that's gone into this. And I definitely support the tiered system up to $60. And I look at things, you know, how things might be impacted in relation to other things that are happening. I mean, the $60, I thought, okay, that's somebody's utility bill that just went up. So that would be impactful for me. It would change my behavior. Because I just now have to figure out how to pay that $60 and the utility bill that just went up. So that's how I look at it, but you know, I do agree that there's something that would need to be done to change behavior. Now, I also want to make sure I understand there's towing is completely separate from this platform, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, then Mr. Tabor.
I support $60.
Okay, Mr. Stern.
This is a minor point, but as we implement these new signs, we're on the verge of getting this nailed down. There was a comment, I think I made it and I think it was echoed. There are a lot of signs throughout the downtown of one ilk or another. The idea of branding any sign that has to do with parking because it's such a sea change for both local residents and others, just some thematic. I think of that when Barry Barazowski, I think, was still Planning Director and we did the comp plan update, it was a simple Norwegian flag in a pen and shape. It doesn't need to take up a lot of room, but I think, Mayor, that someone in a glance visiting the downtown knows that these signs pertain to parking, which is going to be a sensitive matter, which is guide people to an awareness. And if we're going to do it, we need to do it right off the bat.
Well, okay, Ms. Lethal.
There already are signs down there.
There sure are everywhere.
That have a Viking and a Norwegian flag. So my point as an avid traveler is that when I go someplace I'm unfamiliar, I'm really looking for universal symbols for parking. And are they the most aesthetically pleasing? No, they're not, but we all kind of know what they are.
I'm fine with that. Let's just do the brand off the bat.
I mean, I, like, generally speaking, what you're saying appeals to me. I just think in practice, it hasn't really worked here because we do have parking signs with the Viking, with the Norwegian theme, and I don't think people see them because it's not something universal.
So you're suggesting the internationally recognized branding?
If, yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Eckert.
Yeah, I had, I had that, what I was thinking was for the employees. Is if we did something that was unique for the employees, maybe that's the Norwegian sign of the city seal or something, something for the employee, because that's a local.
We can publish for them to recognize.
That's a locals knowledge kind of thing. We don't, tourists don't need to know where employees should be parking. And actually, we kind of wonder, we want that for the employees only. And I just want kind of to pass, but you kind of touched on it. The judge always has the ability to lower fines when someone, if someone requests. So I, we do have that ability and if someone has a need, you know. So I, we do have that ability, and if someone has a need, you know, to ask for a lower fine or has a case they can plead. The judge has discretion, and I don't, I'm not saying we should ever take that away, that's the judge's discretion and she has her own independent authority. I just think there's gonna be a lot of people who can afford to pay them more, fifteen bucks more and are doing it because they just don't want to change their behavior, so. And I would trust our judge to see through those excuses and not lower the fines. So that, that's kinda where I'm, I'm, I'm there with Gary of the folks who just don't want to park further away and don't wanna move and because they don't want to.
Okay, so, Heather, you had your.
I do, uh, if council's done for a moment, I just wanted to share one thing that I think would be helpful for the discussion about increasing the fine above the sixty dollars. I was informed under Deputy Chief Wheeler's leadership that there's been more of an emphasis on parking. And I just wanted to share these statistics with you, cuz I think they're helpful. Um, in twenty twenty-four, uh, the amount of tickets had increased, what, at a hundred and twenty-seven was how many were issued in twenty twenty-four in residential zones in downtown. And based on where they are tracking right now in twenty twenty-five, they're looking at about three hundred and sixty tickets to have been issued. That's almost triple of where we were, and I mention that because I think it may be beneficial for us to see the stats. We will know from Laz, once they start enforcing, if people are, we're getting repeat offenders. We'll know if there's hotspot areas, where maybe there's a different fine structure in a certain area, like we're looking at different zones, right? Loading zones, et cetera. So I, I think, um, for those reasons, we may wanna stick with sixty. If we do revisit, we'll have more data to see if we are recouping those costs and if we are changing behavior.
You're already intending to bring us back to a stats after we start this contract anyway, correct? So just at some point, I would suggest we just, six months in or whatever, we, we include, we have that update and we see where we stand. And if it looks like we need to increase, we discuss it then.
Okay, so, I'm hearing, we're gonna do sixty, not a tiered, um, you know, let's just keep this train moving, alright?
How about a big emotion, is there a motion?
Nope, this is the workshop, okay, so, yeah, so we're, yeah, so. This is what's gonna be coming before you speak now, or, okay? Okay, go ahead, Heather.
But then I, lastly, thank you, Mayor, I did wanna address, so the fifteen-minute, thank you for bringing that up, Josh clarified. Um, that is anything that's overparked, so if you exceed any time limit, you would be subject to the sixty dollar fine. And that would be same for the fifteen-minute site, so I just wanted to clarify that with everyone. If you exceed a fifteen-minute, you're subject to the sixty dollar fine, is the way that it would work, just like any, if you exceed an hour, if you exceed three hours, if you exceed four hours, any of those time zones.
You park where there's hashes, that's where you're, you're parking in an illegal parking spot, that's sixty dollars as well.
Yes, that's correct.
If you park where there's a red stripe, that's a fire lane, that's two fifty, correct? Okay, so, th- there's places where you can park where it costs you a lot of money, but like right down here at the corner, right in front of Birdie's Coffee, right as you're turning up Mo Street, there's a lot of people that always park there in, in front of Apollo Spa, that's an illegal parking space and they will, no matter how long you park there. It's not an unload-load zone, it's an illegal parking space, you are going to get a sixty dollar ticket. Okay, alright, any other questions for Heather?
Are we okay with this being non-consent, or do you wanna have it as a business item next week?
Con- consent, consent?
Okay.
Consent, okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we have, it's Rob, he's back.
No, I was going to ask the same question about consent versus a regular agenda, and I appreciate it being unconcerned.
Okay, alright, so, um, we have the, uh, the business, city business license model threshold update, and this is Rhiannon.
Thank you, Mayor, I am presenting an ordinance tonight that we must adopt by mid-October to get to the state, so they can implement it in January. And for some history on this, in twenty seventeen, we adopted a business license threshold as required by the state legislature. We adopted the threshold of two thousand dollars for both our in-town and out-of-town business licenses. And at that time, we also chose to require the businesses complete a no-fee registration, because we wanted to know who was doing business in town. And now we are being required to up the threshold to four thousand dollars to be effective January first, twenty twenty-six. And so what the ordinance has done that is before you is to increase the threshold to four thousand for both in-town and out-town licenses. And then we're also required to create an automatic periodic increase based on accumulative inflation, so that we don't have to come back every four years to increase this. And then there was one change that I noticed when reading the code, that back in the nineties, we took out what the cost was for nonprofits, which is fee-free. So we added that back into the language. The city attorneys reviewed the update and she approves it ordinance to form, and do you have any questions?
Seems like housekeeping, everybody okay?
We don't, we don't have a choice, right?
Correct.
So.
I mean, you can choose to make the threshold higher.
But we don't have a choice of raising it to four.
Four thousand is the minimum.
Um, so I would just say, when we come back and talk about our B and O tax and maybe adjusting that threshold, we keep this in mind because a lot of the businesses that we are impacting with the B and O, we're just raising their business license fee on hit through this. So maybe we can adjust it.
I don't, I think the B and O should have the same threshold as the business license fee.
I'm just, we didn't wanna hurt small businesses, particularly the retail, now we have, if we have to rate, if we have no choice to raise this, I think it, it's pertinent to that discussion on, do we increase the threshold of who, the exemption threshold for that?
Agreed, okay, when Deb comes back, we'll, we'll have a conversation about that, Mr. McVeigh.
So when I, when I first read this, Rhiannon, uh, maybe I was reading it too fast, I don't know. Um, I thought we were raising the price of a business license in the city of Paulsbow from two thousand dollars to four thousand dollars.
No, no.
What we're talking about is if you do now, it would be, if you do at least four thousand dollars worth of business, you need a business license, correct?
Every, everybody needs a business license, if you make less than four thousand, it's gonna be fee-free.
Okay, okay, so they still would have to obtain a license?
Yes, but it's fee-free.
Okay, alright, thank you for explaining that. Yeah, yeah.
That's an expensive license, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yep, okay, everybody okay with this? It's really housekeeping, yeah, thank you, Rhiannon, on the, on the consent agenda. Okay, so now we have the purchase and installation of American flag banners for light poles for Veterans Day, and this is you, Rick, go for it.
Yes, so I brought this up once before, but I needed to bring it as an actual item, so I asked, um, I asked Rob to add it. Uh, basically, with what I threw out there, just sort of as a comment, um, but we, um, our resolution states that in order to do speech on city property, one of us has to bring it as an item. Uh, what I'm proposing is that we have banners in the same vein as what we currently fly for our new normal Norwegian banners and what we've done with the pride banners. We do ones that are based off the American flag, so basically simply the flag design, and we run it from the day after uh, Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, up through the day after Veterans Day, which is the day of the parade. And we give a month, um, this is partially in response to some of the criticisms we've heard that we're taking away from veterans, I don't believe we are, but there's no reason to, that it needs to be an either-or, we can do and. So I'm proposing this is our and.
Mr. Tabor.
Uh, in the interest of efficiency, may we also use these banners for Memorial and Fourth of July?
We will own them and can fly them whenever we want.
Be patriotic in nature, I assume.
We can, those, I said, that's great, yeah.
Ms. Lithell?
Yes, we'll just say that it does take public works some labor.
There's a labor, every time we go up and down on the flag poles, of any kind of, I mean, especially once downtown, it takes a crew of three, isn't it? Three people, I think it's three, to put them up and take them down.
Efficient, but, yeah.
Yeah, Rob, Rob, he worked out that, you notice the largest cost actually is the labor of putting them up and down. Um, part of the reason I'm suggesting the days I am is because it's the day after holidays, and so we're not incurring overtime on the holidays.
Um, my, my other, my real, I felt attack onto my actual comment, which, um, I haven't gone back and reviewed flag code, but I'm assuming there's not an issue with taking the US flag and putting it in this different format. I just remember back from my elementary school days, there are a lot of.
There shouldn't be, we're not altering the flag itself, all it would have, is potentially, it would have to be a longer flag to reach the ends, um, but what I would envision is the stars at the top and it just, the stripes to reach the necessary length, so that should be sufficient. Well, I remember when I looked it up at one point, actually, when you all were discussing the resolution way back when. And there was discussion of on the street level, that it kinda had issues, but I think, I think we're fine, it's on the, there's certain things about if it was across the street, you have to do it this way, and so, yeah, I think.
And I trust you to get it right. Let's make sure we're legal, Mr. McVeigh.
Thanks, Mayor, um, so I, I was envisioning when, um, when I first read about this and considered it um, that it would, you know, besides a flag design or patriotic design, it would say, you know, happy Veterans Day or thanks veterans or something like that. But, um, if we would want to reuse them for other holidays, uh, that really wouldn't work unless there was some sort of a little, I don't know, sticker or something we could put on the flag. Um, something to think about, you know, um, and, um, I guess I would also say that um, when I, I've watched the city crews put these things up, and we might need to actually invest. If we're gonna do this, um, on an ongoing basis and more frequently, I, I think we're gonna need some new pipes. I mean, some of the pipes are bigger than others, and they're really hard to get through those banner sleeves, um, very difficult, yeah. Um, so we, we might need to get an estimate from my land for some improvements there. But I, I, I support the idea, I support honoring veterans. Um, uh, I do think we just need to think through, you know, what, you could, what other holidays would really do this for? And do we really want to do that, given the cost and that the Lions Club puts up the flags all over town on those holidays as it is? And I wouldn't wanna take away from that.
Yeah, um, I, I would be hesitant to put anything on them because of what Brit, Brit just brought up, we, we run afoul. There is law about altering the US flag, so I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna, we can always do a secondary pennant, pinion, something that says Veterans Day that flies with it, if we wanted to do something like that. But I wouldn't wanna alter the flag itself. Um, and as far as the holders, um, I mentioned it, I know I mentioned it to Brit. I actually drove to into Cleelam on our way back from the conference and looked at their downtown holders um, cuz of flower baskets, because they actually, when they redid their downtown, they redid those same type of installations. And, um, they built in irrigation, so they water themselves. So that's already, like, redoing those in the future when we redo the Front Street, it's already something I, I, I'm noodling because, you know, we can take away costs, because they, they actually have it built that, it, I'll show you the picture after the meeting, but it's really nice, it's all built in and it, and it could all be done at once when we redo, redo Front Street.
Talking flags now, so we can't have anything that's gonna alter the American flag, but it has to be a flag-like banner, okay? With no language on it, so we're not, so is that what we got, are we all okay with this?
Okay.
Okay, alright, uh, now we're on to, uh, questions and concerns of the city council. Awfully quiet, we've been here a long time, okay, I'm not seeing anybody jumping, anything. Uh, continued public comment, if you have comment for the council, step to the podium, you have three minutes and state your name for the record. Anyone, nope. Final comments, Mayor and Council comments. I think we're talked out, go ahead.
Sorry, didn't hear the slash feature, uh, agenda items. Um, I know we're gonna come back with some data from parking, I just was curious at some point, we could get update on the cities use of placere AI and, and what we're learning from that.
It's a good question, I, cuz I don't know the answer to that, that's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, Mayor and Council comments? Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna say, um, we heard from Mojo earlier, but our, our police do amazing work. We have folks that come and disparage our police sometimes and yes, incidents happen, but our police on a regular basis, every single day, do amazing work and they deserve credit for that.
We have a full police force right now, and we actually have people wanting to come to work here as Paulsbow PD. We're not having trouble hiring at all, we have, uh, um, Ron Harding, our chief of police, Lee Wheeler, our deputy chief. They're doing magnificent work and we all should be very proud that they work for the city of Paulsbow. Okay, any other comments from the council, other than somebody moved to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Nay.
We're adjourned.